Good evening. This is the meeting of the Hampden Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health, or meeting jointly this evening with the Planning Board, held in the Townhouse Auditorium, July 29, 2024. I call the meeting to order for the Board of Selectmen.
I will call to order the meeting of the Planning Board, July 29, 2024.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, in his vote with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is anyone else recording the meeting other than ourselves? Kristen Rivers is from the Hampden, Wilbraham Times. Okay. The, I want to, the, a little bit different tonight. We're going to have an executive session to discuss two pieces of litigation, and what the Selectmen and the Planning Board are going to adjourn to the Selectmen's Office to be with our attorney to discuss that, and then we'll return here in open session to take the rest of our business, including the appointment of someone to fill a vacancy on the Planning Board. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session under exemption, Mass. General Law 30A, Section 21, Exemption 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, specifically Garvey versus Hampden and 16 Summers Road LLC versus Hampden. I've determined that meeting, the executive session is necessary because in public session may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. I'll take a roll call vote.
Entertain a motion.
Second.
John Flynn, aye.
Donald Danforth, aye.
Reverend Reston, aye.
Madison Dixley, aye.
Eric Cohen, aye.
David Demers, aye.
We'll return when we'll, you know, executive session. The Selectmen's Office will return here. Thank you. All right, we're back, everybody. We're back. The next item on the agenda is filling the vacancy on the, with the Planning Board. And you want to just give us an update, Brian, where we are here?
With fill in the vacancy?
Yep.
Yep. Put my note up here. So when there's a vacancy on an elected board, it's a, it's a joint vote between the remaining members of that elected board and Board of Selectmen. So Joanna and I put out a notice of the vacancy, and we had several candidates that were interested, two of which are here tonight. And we're going to go through, the board's going to go through a process wherein the boards are going to ask the applicants to, was it two minutes, one minute opening statement? Up to two-minute opening statement. And then there would be a, I think the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board will switch off asking questions of, of the, the two potential candidates, and then at some point there will be nomination made by the Board of Selectmen and by the Planning Board, and there'll be a vote, and that person in the, the applicant or the candidate who has the most votes will fill the rest of the, the term, and the, the position will be on the ballot.
Till the election.
And next May at the annual election.
And the two candidates are?
Alan Marshall and John Matthews.
Okay. And so we'll begin, so the process that we have is that each candidate has an opportunity to give a one-minute or two-minute opening statement about their qualifications, and then after that, well, they won't, after they give their statement, they can be asked questions. I'll call on the Planning Board first, ask a question, we'll alternate back and forth. And because there's only two candidates, I think the question should first be asked to one, then the other one can answer, then the next question will be asked to the candidate B, so that, so he can have the first answer, and then candidate A can have the second answer. So, Mr. Marshall, Attorney Marshall.
Mr. Smith.
Do you want to come sit over here?
Yeah, yeah, come sit over here. Alan.
Alan, come sit over here.
Right there. Then we'll put the light on you. It's easier that way.
Go ahead. Opening statement.
Oh, yeah. So my name's Alan Marshall. Let's see, this past February marked 30 years I've been a resident here in Hampden. My wife and I moved in. We live up on Burley Road, just right over the line from Wilbraham. Also, last month was my 30th anniversary. So I worked for the Postal Service. I grew up in Ludlow. I worked for the Postal Service for 22 years. During the, say, the last 10 years I was with them, I went back to school. I did get my law degree. I became a practicing attorney in 2005. So I worked in private practice for maybe five or six years. I worked for Anthony Chabelli. He was attorney in Wilbraham. Unfortunately, he's passed away fairly recently. I worked for his firm for about three years. And then I worked for S.M. Riley Associates in Springfield from, let's see, a couple of years prior to pandemic. So I have my resume in front of me. It was about 2016, maybe the 2021. And at the time, Stephen Riley Jr., who was the senior partner at that time, his father had retired, was town council with Wilbraham, which is sort of unusual. It's a small firm. It was actually just him and I, or the entire firm. So I became familiar with land use just as I became tasked with providing legal services to the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Board in Wilbraham. So I'd attended quite a few meetings with them, had done some executive session with them, a couple of permits. Actually, the last case that I had worked with them was a solar field case up on South Munson Road, which actually ended up, ended up having the special permit denied by the Planning Board. It was appealed to Land Court, so I represented the town of Wilbraham and the Planning Board in Land Court at trial. Very unfortunately, and still leaves a bad taste in my mouth, we unfortunately lost at the Land Court. And shortly after that, I mean, certainly not because of that, but shortly after that, more dory, more because of COVID, I retired. So I've been retired now for maybe for about three years, retired from the practice of law. About a year and a half ago, I went, a friend of mine was looking for some help in his office, a criminal defense attorney in Springfield, and just more or less have something to do and get back downtown, be around the courthouse. So I've been working 20 hours a week for the past year and a half or so with him. Other than that, the activities, I do have free time in the evening. I, I'm a member of Grace Union Church in Wilbraham, so I'm active there. I'm a deacon at that church. I'm the moderator for the church. I'm the chair of the finance committee of the church. It's sort of a small congregation. I also have been active with nonprofit in Springfield, Action Center Tutoring Services, which is a faith-based free tutoring service for Springfield elementary school children. The organization's been around about 35 years. I've been with them now about 15 of the last seven or eight as a board member.
Do you want me to sit in?
Yeah, if you're going to get us.
I know what I'm sitting beside. I can understand, but my default may come down and miss me and hit you. Probably many of you know me. My name's John Matthews. I was on the Planning Board previously. The, I've been in town since basically 1966. My parents moved here. I've been involved with town government for quite a period of time, starting with the Planning Board, but I've also been involved with the, when I was on the Planning Board to help frame the solar bylaw that we have presently in the by, in zoning bylaws. And I did serve as a Committee of One on the Ridge and Hill side. I also was on the Stormwater Committee in town presently. Now I am on the Advisory Committee, and I am also on the Senior Citizen, or Senior Center Building Committee as a resident. So I've been active. I do have a fair amount of credentials with my planning experience. So, yeah, I, I've been in town. I enjoy it. I'd like to see some changes made. Yeah.
Madison, any other questions?
I think you guys answered most of my questions already, but, so we've had a couple of vacancies over the last few years. I feel like we've had like one a year. So what makes you interested in joining now, after we've been looking for people for the last two, three years?
This is actually the first time I've become aware of vacancy.
Oh, I asked what made them interested in joining the Planning Board now after having vacancies for the last couple of years.
One, I, this is the first time I've been aware of a vacancy. I actually saw it was online. And also, two, mainly because I've been retired this past couple of years, I've been looking for other opportunities. As I had said, I am involved in a couple of nonprofit activities, but to, but it was time for you to get back to the town.
Same question?
Yes.
Why do I want to? One of the reasons is that I originally ran a campaign and got voted out, but Patrick took over as the master plan. So that was one of my things, and one of the things is is how's the master plan going to dovetail into the zoning bylaws? That's one thing. The other thing is, I think we're going to need to, and my personal, these are all my personal opinions, is that I think the Board, Planning Board, is going to need to revise the solar bylaws because of the fact that we now have this battery storage, so, which is, is, is involved. I think that you're going to need some expertise in, in getting that bylaw written in a timely manner. The other thing is to revise the, some of the existing bylaws, clean them up a little bit. And what are my things? Because from my viewing of the Planning Board and some of it, we seem to be getting mired down with, I'm going to say, kind of some mundane things. And I'm saying mundane, meaning the substandard frontage lots, the common driveway type of thing. What I would do is I would look to refine some of those bylaws and then try and move them to, I'm, I'm sure, move them to the ZBA. They would become the special permit granting authority for that, those two in particular. Trying to remove some of the load from the Planning Board, in turn, returning the Planning Board to a more of a writing bylaw, moving forward, informing how the town is going to be. That's my, my look at that. So, you know, there is quite a bit of work to do, especially now, the governor has approved $400 billion Homes Act, and what it is, is basically, the town, this is a by right now. This is going to be by right, is 900 square foot or smaller dwellings can now be put on any law. So in turn, you're going to need to be able to write some reasonable regulations for that type of housing. So those are some of the reasons that I'd like to come up with.
Greg, good job. Yeah, I'll jump in real quick. John, Alan. John, I know you've done it before, so you know the workload. You do have a lot of other committees going on. Alan, I know you read it. You said you don't have any kids, so, and you're retired, so you have a little bit of free time, but you're helping out with your friend there. You know, the Planning Board meets biweekly, right?
Twice a month.
Twice a month. And there's a lot involved. Sometimes things pop up, sometimes special meetings. Do you both feel confident that you'd be able to dedicate the time to the position?
Oh.
We'll start with Alan.
Yes. No problem whatsoever. I have a monthly board meeting with the Axe Tutoring, which is always the third Monday of the month, but that can be moved if it ends up being a conflict with the regular schedule of the Planning Board, and all my volunteer work with the church is in the daytime.
John?
I feel like I should be able to handle the workload. I am retired also. Very rarely go on vacation. And the workload that, in this foreseeable future, hopefully, the Senior Center Building Committee will eventually go away, okay? And hopefully, we get the funding. That's why I'm also here, so I'm not going away. Anyways, that, and of course, Advisory Committee. Advisory, yes, it's not a big load, only just a couple of weeks, months before each town meeting, if you will, whether it be the, if you will, fall town meeting or special town meeting, or the spring town meeting, or the annual town meeting. So those two, I should be able to handle.
Planning Board member have a question?
So the timing here is this?
No question for them.
Well, just to clarify, so this, this will be to fulfill the remaining?
No, till the town election.
Till the town, until May. And then in May, the?
Person will have to run.
Will run for how?
The remainder of the term.
Remainder of, which will be how long?
Four years.
Four years.
And is that, are you interested in that beyond this initial up to the election date?
Go ahead. John, you, you start it.
Really don't know. At this point, I, I would anticipate that I would, barring something unforeseen about this job, which is the fact that I have worked with the Wilbraham Planning Board. I think I have a good idea of what, what the workload is there. I assume it's fairly equivalent, because I don't anticipate it.
I don't anticipate a problem in May for the remaining term, basically. The, I believe you, you have the option. I think the law says that you do not have to. You have to fill, fulfill the empty position. And then if somebody runs against you, they may vote, you might get that. Okay? So that's, that's pretty much how it really works. So somebody may not like what I do, and I might be voted out if I got the position.
John, you have a question?
Sure. This is, I have to say, I think I've had more Planning Board appointment meetings in the last three years than the 17 years I've been on the board before that. And first one thing, John, I think we're fortunate. We have four current or past chairman of the Planning Board here, Don Collins, with great experience. Yourself, John, at your time. Madison, who puts us all to shame, I think, right now.
And yourself.
She puts us all to shame. There we are. So municipal experience, quickly. Alan, you mentioned you worked with Tony Chabelli.
Yes.
Who was the moderator in Wilbraham as well, right?
He was.
He was. And then you said, when you worked with Riley, you did municipal work there.
I did. It was, Steve was town council.
The one question I have, and I mean, I think we, we heard from John how important the master plan is. What's your perception of that? And then back to John, where do we go from there with what we have? So first off, what do you think about the master plan?
Well, unquestionably, the Planning Board's going to have to work, work with other boards in the town, other, other agencies. But I, I guess I go into this, my planners go into this without really an agenda. I mean, to, to look at the duties of the Planning Board, I see one, maybe a plus, it may be a minus. As I said, I've lived in town for 30 years. I, I honestly, I'd be surprised if I could name 15 people in town. I don't, I, I don't have any political motivation for doing anything. I don't have any faction. I, I don't go in with any rigid idea of how the town is going to go. I, I think as, as items are brought before the Planning Board, and because in those bylaws of the town, it does, lays out special permit practices, what the criteria by statute and by the bylaws of the town, to look at each case on an individual basis and, and decide, you know, again, based on health, safety, the best interest of the town. Yeah, it's, I think that's grips to the job.
As I look at it, our present master plan, 1983 timeframe, a lot of it never got implemented for, you know, reasons that would have been costs. Some people might have not felt it was important. I think one of the things with this master plan, it gives you kind of a direction in which way the town will be, or should be, or need to go to. The master plan gives you kind of a roadmap in which way you want your town to be developed. So with that, and like I say, how that would dovetail into the zoning regulations and other things of that nature. Some of it might be, and again, I'm not sure, but some of it is, you know, parks, open space, you know, how you handle traffic, you know, the business centers of the town, things of that nature. How does that all dovetail in? You know, do we, are we going to do overlay districts into the town, you know, a, you know, as Wilbraham did, in the center of the town, they'd have apartments, and they have restaurants, and, you know, the taproom, things of that nature in the center of the town, which was a, if it's an overlay district or whatever, however it worked in that manner. But that was some of the things that hopefully would come out of the master plan.
Any other sort of Planning Board have a question?
I have a question for both. How do you feel your past experiences could help the Planning Board? In what direction do you feel the town, you want to see the town proceed?
You want to go? I can, sure. Would you say that again?
Yes. How do you feel your experience could help the Planning Board? In what direction do you foresee the town proceeding?
Okay. So some of it, which way I see, you know, I have?
Personal insight.
Personal, okay. I have a personal view, and I'm going to say this change is going to remain constant. So the town is going to keep evolving, keep changing. How it does, so for me, I look at certain things that bring people to the town, okay? Some of those are the open space that we have, okay? I think we need to really concentrate a little bit more on making the open space a little bit more friendly, okay? Right now, I know we're, they're working on North Road to try and get a parking lot in, but it's not, they're, the open space in this town is not like Wilbraham's. Wilbraham is really very, very friendly, very, very open, you know? It's, it's really well done, really, really well done. So that's one thing. How's business going to be developed in town? That's another thing. And also recreation. I look at, you know, you have, you have Great Horse, okay, which is a, honestly, a real jewel for this community. I've traveled throughout the South, and I've understood what Great Horse could actually bring to this community if you partner with them. Instead of fighting with them, we partner with them. One of the things was, is I, I rode through the, I do a lot of motorcycle riding, and one of the reasons, we stopped in one of these little towns, and I said to the gas station, the guy, I says, "Why? What's going on with all these people here? What's, oh?" I says, "All these golf courses." And he said, "Yeah, it's like a destination." I, I didn't get it, like a destination. "What do you mean?" And he says, "Well, just like you go out to Colorado to ski, you go to Vail or something like that." He said, "It's the, very much the same thing. People come from all over, you know, the country, maybe the world, I don't know, to play golf at these places." So, you know, it's important that you take and work with the community, the members of the community, to help further it, I guess is what I'm saying. I'm done.
Yeah, it's funny. The same things that attracted me to, my wife and I, to Hampden, when we purchased our home here in 1994, are the same reasons why the two of us, again, without children, have remained in Hampden and, and have no intention of leaving Hampden to town. To me, really seems the continuity of the town, as far as population, certainly, level of development, traffic, all of that. I think, while we're always looking for, I suppose, more economic opportunity, and that, I, I don't golf, and I have no doubt that Great Horse is, is, is well-known. I don't know that having it as a destination necessarily enhances anything, except maybe people, some people can locate Hampden on a map. It doesn't seem to be the type of business that fosters additional business, brings additional people to, as customers of other businesses in town. There's no lodging. So I certainly wouldn't look to draw them out of town, but as far as building around or building up around Great Horse, I, I don't really have an opinion on that. But I, personally, and I think my, until I learn otherwise, which perhaps I would if I were to become a member of the Planning Board and, and became more recognizable in town, if, if it seemed that the community had an interest in somehow changing the character of Hampden, maybe that would change my opinion. Personally, I don't think that's, that's the feeling of residents in the town. I think they want to maintain what they have here now, while of course looking for, you know, opportunities that are a benefit to the town, that aren't detrimental to safety, to help, well-being of residents of the town. That's the balance. That's the balance that the statute asks Planning Boards to weigh. Thank you.
Any further questions, Alan? Or motion? Yes, or some of the Planning Board can make a motion, yeah?
Can you make the last comment?
Yeah.
I'm going to just say Alan's an excellent candidate. I'm going to tell you that right now, okay? I mean, you have his experience from Wilbraham, okay, on, you know, matters that he's been to court again. So he's an excellent, excellent candidate. That's, that's my feeling, you know? You're not, you're not going to be hurt either way.
You're looking for somebody to kick it up, kick it off?
Kick it off. Go ahead. You'll kick it off.
You'll kick it off.
I'll make a motion to point Alan Marshall to the vacancy in the Planning Board. I'll make a motion to point Alan Marshall to the vacancy in the planning board. I made a motion to appoint Alan to the planning board.
Is there a second, either board?
I'll second it. Are there any other nominations?
Well, I think, you know, I'll make a motion to appoint John Matthews.
Second.
Okay. We'll take a vote, it's a roll call vote. Done here.
No discretion?
Discussion.
If I could make a quick point. I know both gentlemen personally, and it's one of those things where you can't, you can't dispute John's record and the service he's given to the town. And it sounds like one of those things, but on the other hand, and this discussion came up last year in a different way.
Yeah.
That John is a member of the advisory committee because he stepped up. He's on the senior center building committee, why? Because he stepped up, and now he's vice chairman. So he's got valuable roles. I'd like you to be able to sleep sometime. I do see an opportunity for, what we've been talking about for a while, is to get new people involved in town.
Yes.
Just like Pat stepped up, Christina stepped up, Dave stepped up. Madison, you were dragging to it, but thank you for stepping. But again, it's one of those things. We are well-served by having two good candidates in front of us. I mean, if one of you want to step down, we'll take them both. I'm kidding, don't do that. So, it's one of those things where, you know, and I think, I know John knows where I'm coming from.
Absolutely.
Because as chairman, he was always looking for, I need new people. I need new people.
And I'm a big proponent of that, honestly. So that's why I spoke up. And, yeah, you do need new blood, definitely.
It's not just because he's a neighbor, Burley Road, North Road, nothing to that.
Any further discussion?
I just want to comment that what John said really resonates with me about the vision for this town. And while I do agree that many residents like the town the way it is, it is my firm opinion that change is inevitable. It doesn't have to be all or nothing. It doesn't have to be huge change, but change is inevitable in every aspect of life. And I think that John's vision for bylaws, the master plan, and especially open space in the town, making it a little more user-friendly, for lack of a better term, that really resonated with me.
Anyone else? Okay, ready for the vote? They're called roll call vote, Christine?
Christina Brodeur, John Matthews.
Mr. Flynn?
John Flynn, Alan Marshall.
Mr. Coyne?
John Matthews.
Mr. Revest?
John Matthews.
Does anyone keep a score? Okay, Mr. DeBert?
John Matthews, sir. David DeBert, John Matthews.
Mr. Davenport, Mr. Marshall. Yeah, Madison.
Mr. Marshall.
What do we got?
Matthews, four.
Four, three, four to three.
Four to three.
Four, three, John.
Four to three.
Four, three, John. Yeah, Marshall.
I was thinking it's four to three, John.
John was John, so John Matthews.
Yeah, four to three.
You still got the badge, right?
No, I turned that in.
You're four to three?
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
And again, you know, don't, don't lose interest, please. You never know.
Yeah, John told me to bylaws, he wants to write, we need people to write them.
Oh, no, wait a minute, wait a minute. Alan, what do you know about conservation?
There we is.
Yeah, we'll see.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can adjourn.
Oh, motion to adjourn, Davenport, Green, 708.
Thank you all for your service. Thank you.
John, you're standing for senior.
I am, yes.
Thank you.
Kidding. All right. Senior Center Building Committee.
John, come back up. Where'd he go? Hey, John, you're, John, you're back in the front seat.
Senior Center.
John? I know, but I mean, I think all the members should be part of this.
Four members.
Mike?
Come on up, yeah, they want you to come up. Yeah.
All right, what are we doing here?
So I asked to have this on the agenda because at the last senior center building committee meeting, we talked about that if this was going to go forward for a warrant article in the fall, it would need to be moved quickly through the committee. And so the committee was looking for some clarification that this will be entertained for a warrant article in the fall, and they wanted to bring that question to the board.
That's, John is correct. What we are looking for is an acceptance from the select board that would be able to put our plan, the senior center building committee's plan, on the agenda or the warrant, the warrant articles for the town. Now, of course, you know, you know what it's going to entail.
Will you have a final number by town meeting?
We will. We will have a final number. We're going to answer both your concerns, Craig, and your concerns. Don, basically, we'll come back and you know.
So, so logistically, logistically, the town meeting is going to be October 21, somewhere around there, okay? And then we have to give a 35-day notice to the town clerk for election. If it's at a special town meeting, it has, the vote has to take place within 90 days.
Okay.
So if we give a 35-day notice, you're talking about Thanksgiving week. And then you're talking about having a special election sometime in between Christmas and Thanksgiving, which raises the question, which we always talk about, is participation by everybody?
I'm sorry, why would that? I know the 90-day thing. The election has to be held 90 days after the town meeting vote. So wouldn't, right, so wouldn't that election could be in January?
Within 90 days.
Oh, I thought you said between Christmas and Thanksgiving.
Well, if you did the 35-day notice to the- We have to give at least 35 days.
Right, the notice.
So let's say the soonest would be 35 days, the latest would be 90 days, which would be January, okay?
Better participation.
Which raises the question that everyone always brings up. Should we take these kind of things up at a special town meeting, which is, you know, a lot of money? And then we have a special election in the middle of the winter, and what's the turnout going to be like there? So that's the logistical question.
And I mean, that's not the only logistical question on that, because you have some other questions coming up from how the results out of the government study committee on those.
Well, the government study committee questions can't be taken up until the annual town election.
Okay.
By law. So if they vote, so if they vote, the town meeting votes to go ahead with those, those go to the annual town meeting. Right, so we need to, so we need a special town meeting for a proposition, two and a half exclusion. And I guess the question is, will enough people vote that'll be, you know? I don't know, what's the rush?
Well, part of the concern that came up at the meeting, if I could speak, John, was that, and unfortunately, Gary's not here, he's tied up with unfortunately, a plumbing problem. We anticipate that even coming back in November or October, we're still going to see a pretty substantial increase in the cost of the project from the cost standpoint. Even though the committee is committed to changing the scope to bring the cost down, the hard cost of construction, because of the way the economy is going, could still increase that. So even if you said, and I'm going to throw in, 6,000 feet is going to go down to 4,800 feet. The cost at a 4,800 may be the same as the 6,000 was six months ago.
Exactly.
And if we wait another six months on top of it, it's only going to get worse.
That's, that's the biggest thing, is the construction costs are continuing to, I'm going to say spiral out of control. And I'm saying they are out of control because of the fact that we see, you know, close to, you know, 6, 7, 8% increases in those costs. You know, who knows what's going to happen with the future in government, in, you know, national government. We don't know what's going to happen, so it's a, it's a difficult decision, I understand. The biggest thing is, is we want to try and at least stem the cost, at least get it approved, so we at least have some idea of, that we're going to move forward if we, if we can get it approved.
But what, but what consideration has been given? That the town meeting voted against it, and the town election voted against it, and here we are saying, we want you to go to a special, which is not always well attended, and now we're going to might have an election in the middle of January where it could snow and, you know, and 10 people could show up.
The right 10 people. If I could quickly, and I think, because we, again, I'm at these meetings, I think the committee took back an understanding of the town meeting action that they weren't happy with the cost, and they felt they didn't get as much information as they needed. And it wasn't a, a vote against the project as a whole, that they didn't feel comfortable with the price, or that the explanation for the price wasn't as forward as it needs to be. And then the vote afterwards, which was still close considering that it was turned down at town meeting.
Well, it was 57 to 43%.
But I think that's close when they, most people thought, oh, it was already turned down and voting no anyhow. So I think the committee saw enough of an interest in the town that it should be brought back. It wasn't voted down 90%, we don't want any addition. Wasn't like that. Hey, go back and sharpen your pencil, or provide better information.
That's one of the things, and the need never went away. There is still a need for, you know, some space. I'm saying some, we haven't finalized that number. But that need for the space to be able to handle the programs, and there are, if you, if you go by the senior center, many times, there are more than a few cars in the parking lot, okay? That, that center serves an awful lot of people, which you don't hear about. So there still is that need. There's the need for, you know, if you will, somebody for medical, nursing, things of that nature. All of this is important to the senior community. And that senior community really deserves a spot, whether it's 6,000 square feet or we drop it down.
Do you think, do you think that at the vote, at the, at the election, the town election, do you think the people who voted against it weren't seniors?
I can't, I, that I couldn't answer. I'm going to just tell you, I'm going to tell you my one, my own personal one, okay? My own personal. Now, when the senior center was first going to be, they were getting funding for it. Bill Olstead was going around and trying to get money raised and everything else. And I told my parents, I said, you don't need a senior center. There's no way in hell you need a senior center. No way in hell you're going to get one. I'm, I'm, it's terrible, my taxes are going to go up. I'm going to blah, 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 everything under this. But yeah, when I, my parents went to that senior center, and I saw how much they enjoyed that senior center, it was very selfish of me to deny them that. And that's why I'm saying that they need a senior center, they need the space. And that's why, you know, it's important. It really is to those seniors. My father, on his deathbed, said to me, the thing I miss the most, John, is going, not going to the senior center. So.
Well, we're not saying, we're doing away with the senior center. We're just trying to, we're trying to determine. Yeah, okay, well, so what we're trying to determine is, is it appropriate to go to a special town meeting and a special election in January? When who knows?
So for me, yeah, it is. It's that important to me, okay?
I think it's-
Don, you know, to mention what, what, sorry, well, you know, we've been studying this for almost two years now, and, you know, and came up with a plan, you know, and presented it. The costs over that two years increased significantly, and the cost now continues to increase, besides the fact that we now are incurring more design and plan modification expenses. So put it off, you know, it's, we look now, we've shrunk the ambitions down for the center. When we get the professionals to give us the cost increases, everybody's going to be shocked, you know? We, we reduced it significantly, but I don't know if we're going to make a major impact on, you know, on the dollar amount because of the increase, 7% a year increase in construction cost.
Yeah, I'm on that committee. We are also going to be much more proactive in fundraising, so we have an idea of how much we actually have to go for. So we are organizing now to approach businesses and people that have been detrimental to us in the past. And so we'll have an idea of the, of the cost, less the amount would be. Hopefully, great contributions. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think, going back to a couple of things. The increase in cost, I mean, that is a major driver. You look at the fact, we built Minichaug, how many years ago? For 70-something million. Eastlaw Middle is building the same high school for 175. That's how it's going. Look at the increase we have with the highway garage. We waited a year to go out, the cost doubled. The part about the special town meeting, I think Craig has made the point before, that we need, unfortunately, it's the way that municipal business runs now. We need to be able to react at different times during the year. Projects go too fast, costs go too fast. We need to be able to respond to them. And we can't just say, well, we'll put that off. This isn't like buying a pickup truck for the highway department, where it might go up $1,000 if you wait a year. This is important, and pushing it off doesn't make sense. It doesn't make fiscal sense, and it doesn't make-
Except for, except for the fact, though, that you've got a town meeting vote and a town election vote that say they don't want to fund that much money.
I disagree with that. Yes, they don't want to fund that much money. That was a mandate back to the committee, come back with a different plan. And their point is that if you want a good economic result, that mandate to go back, we need to bring it back quickly. Otherwise, it's going to go up higher and higher.
So, and you can keep shrinking it, shrinking it, until we start tearing it down.
Is the concern, is the concern that if we get Thornton Burgess, that we might say, put some of the senior center over there and they'll save us money?
We are, we're evaluating that, okay? And I won't speak to it right now, but we are evaluating it. We've spoke about it, and there's some, some concerns about it, definitely so. It could, it could cost the town more in operating expenses, meaning, I shouldn't say operating expenses, or labor. We may have to put people over there where you, you know? So there could be additional expense. You know, I'm going to be very truthful with you and say I'm not against that. Oh, hardly I'm not against it, but we need to evaluate it, definitely so. One of the things that you need to do is figure out if, if Town Hall is going to go over there to, to Thornton Burgess, you know, how much room do you have? Some of the other things are, you know, do we, you know, one of your concerns, or one of the community's concerns is, you know, community center. Does the community center reside at the Thornton Burgess? So those are all things that you need to think about, so.
That's what I was going to just kind of touch on. I said, maybe we're, we're losing sight of what the project is and where-
and where it was and where it's going. I mean, was there ever any studies done to see, maybe in master plan or planning board, that does the community prefer a community center that's open longer to the general public? Before, before you jump into that, I heard a lot of complaints that's, you know, senior center, well, what about other demographics? And Don had made a point saying, it's not us versus them or them versus whoever. It's, you know, it's the community in general. I mean, would we be beneficial and would the number that was originally proposed have been a different outcome if it was presented in a different full-on community aspect, you know? I know, I've heard people say, well, why don't you come on down to the senior center? Well, honestly, it's only open until 3 o'clock or 3:30 or whatever. It's tough for, you know, families that are working just to get down there and, you know, partake in some of the activities. You know, if it was studied and thought thoroughly, I mean, look back at the, the police station was built. And now, now we're looking at the fire station. You know, we could have had a government center back then that would have addressed everything for the future. You know, should we be looking at that aspect as a more of a broad brush? You know?
And I understand that, Greg. Absolutely. I look at this and, and if you, if you will, the senior center actually, we used to have movies. The town used to have, you know, movies every month, right here, I believe. They would show the movies. And the senior center or the seniors center actually held the license for those movies. And it was done through, you know, the recreational committee or, or whatever. So, you know, working together, that's a possibility. That's why I'm saying if you get Thornton Burgess, that, that's an opening. But you can't wait because we need to know. The town really needs to, needs to know what, what's going to happen with Thornton Burgess. If we wait another year, two years, we've kicked that can for a little while about Thornton Burgess. And we don't have an answer. So you need to make the decision and, you know, as a community? Yes, let's look at that as a community center possibly. You know, you have, and I'm getting off track here, but you have the possibility of having movies at Thornton Burgess. The, the senior center may sponsor it because they have the license. So those are some of the things. Again, I'm not, I don't run a senior center. I'm not savvy enough about that. But I look at things and I say, you know what, let's try and do this as a combination. Absolutely.
FYI, we do have movies at the senior center.
You're still going?
This afternoon.
You just can't announce them, right?
Are they appropriate?
And, and they're, and they're in color too. So they are new ones.
But there's something else along with that is that the senior center is, I'm going to ask, is it going to be open nights? Becky, for some, some activities?
Yes, we have a full schedule of meeting programs in September and October for the community to participate in.
Yeah. So, you know, we've heard, we've heard, we've heard your.
Don, you want to say something?
Just a comment there, Greg. In terms of the community center as served as an emergency center, comfort station, you know, back whatever, 10 years ago, when we were without electricity for several days, that was open 24 hours a day.
That's, that's a different aspect. It's probably the same plan too. So I understand that.
Yeah.
But that's completely different apples to oranges.
The senior center doesn't discriminate in terms of the programs they have. You don't have to be 55. If you want some information on your insurance program, Becca is certified, you know, as a counselor on that and can assist people, people who would come there for their taxes. There are a number of programs that they run that it really partially does serve as a community center.
So basically, the committee wants some guidance. Their interpretation is the town meeting told, go back, come back with a revised plan. We're not happy with the number.
I don't know if Tom said that.
Okay, go ahead and finish.
No, I, I, I'm not saying I'm against that, but the town meeting didn't say come back with another number.
Really?
The town meeting just said that they voted no.
And all the questions that happened during the discussion, I think, going back to what focused on the number and some misleading information about participation at the center.
And we, we probably did, and I'm going to say, we didn't do a good job. We need to do a better job for, for the town to help them better understand. We really do.
Right. And I, I think that's great that you're seeing these and trying to address it.
Yeah. Yes. You know, and, and some of it is, is that we will address, you know, when we came to you for the 9,800 and thank you for that. You know, I heard yours and, and Don's both go, and we will address that. Our.
As far as coming back in the fall, I'm on the fence about it.
Yeah.
You know, I completely think, as John said, that we need to have two meetings a year to get things done. On the flip side, when I presented stuff like that, I keep getting the pushback from a lot of people that say, it's not the right time.
And so, and I'm going to go back to, I'll go back to something when I was on planning board. It was said to me as when I was chairman, oh, you can't change the bylaw during a special town meeting. And I said, where does it say it in the master of law? I didn't see it anywhere. It's something that we've never done. But again, you know, yeah, I, I pushed the envelope and we did make some bylaws because it's necessary to make these changes. And I'm, I'm going to tell you that you really definitely need to move away from that it's a special town meeting. Everyone wants to call it a special. I, I kind of don't call it that anymore. I just call it a fall town meeting.
It's the annual, it's the annual special town meeting. It's the annual special.
But I mean, at one time, yes, it was a special town meeting.
It's no longer a special town meeting.
There you go from the moderator.
The only thing that's prescribed, you cannot change the general bylaw during a special town meeting. That can only be done at the annual.
And, and that should be done.
Yeah. It's always been, oh, I've heard. But again, correct. Yeah. So Craig, you make good points. You do. But again, we got a committee of hardworking people that are typically work, meet every other week with an aggressive schedule to get the things. As Don says, if you want to meet the advisory hearing, things like that, and come back with information, and I heard at town meeting, people felt they didn't know enough about the project. And the committee took that to heart.
And one of them was that, the question, well, what's the roof going to cost? What's this going to cost? And so some of that is going to come out in this.
You could, you could get 100 signatures and just put it out like that.
Yeah. It's a hun, it's 100, I believe. Right? You're right. Yeah. So.
Donald, can you explain to me how this whole committee was formed? Was it your idea? I was asked to be on a committee. So what did you want? The, the charge note?
Yeah.
The charge from the selectmen?
The charge was to look at the senior center and see what renovations or what did he have be done, which they did.
For the next 25 to 50 years.
Right, for the next 20 years.
The 25 to 50 years is what got me for expansion. And.
Anyhow, so bottom line.
We are trying to address those concerns and we're, it's a tight schedule.
I'd like to give you the opportunity to do it, but I think that you need to be very, very proactive in getting the message out there, you know, in all forms, or else it's going to end up a disaster. A disaster.
Every, every warrant article has that danger. Exactly.
Donald, how much would it cost to have too many meetings and elections? And you see, that concerns me, the expense.
Yeah, let me, you know, I mean, I don't know. Eva would know how much a special election costs with printing of the ballots and stuff like that. I don't know.
I heard 1,200.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not a lot. I mean, it's not, you know.
In fact, the winters we've had lately, who sees snow anymore?
The, the, the issue is, the issue is, special elections always have very low turnout, no matter what they're.
That's my concern too.
You know?
If the question came up and it was asked before, would you have it at the presidential election? Eva has said she would prefer not to, you know, and.
Well, you, you would have to, if you wanted it at the presidential election, you have to send it to the Secretary of State by August 15th. He has to approve to go.
Right, to go on ballot.
Yeah.
Right? If you want it on the town meeting, then that's October. And then if it's passed at the town meeting, then the, then, then the selectmen have to again vote to see if we want to have a special election. If we don't take action in 90 days, it's null and void. So. So is there a motion to do something with this so we can get the moderator talking?
I don't know if we need a, they're looking for guidance. I mean, typically the board, if the planning came to us, if some elected committee said, hey, we've got a warrant article for it. You made a point, they could ask for 100 signatures, but I think they're saying, look, we're, we're working hard. We're going to bring a warrant question forward. Is the board going to allow it on the, on the special town meeting warrant? I don't, typically I don't deny committees that work for the town.
I don't remember denying anything in the last three years I've been.
Right, exactly.
No, I, I wouldn't deny it either because I think people have a right to vote. I was telling you, you got to.
Exactly. A hill to climb here.
You got a long road, you got a tough road to hoe. And I, I personally don't, don't believe it'll pass again, but.
And that's okay. Yeah. Everybody's got their opinion.
All right. This is my opinion.
So.
And you know me, I don't often express my opinion.
Yeah, this is Don, by the way. I don't know if you've met before. Thanks.
It's okay.
So I guess the, the answer back to the committee is work hard.
Work hard, right?
Work hard, yes.
Okay, all right. Clearly, what's the, what's the, we haven't put a closing day in the war yet, have we?
No. Heck, we haven't picked a day yet.
Yeah, we haven't picked a day for the meeting yet.
I think we're kicking 21st or 28th around right now. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
And I, I also appreciate the frank discussion that we all express our views the way we feel it.
Yeah.
You know?
As it should be.
Yeah.
What is it, Rick? We all got to be, we're all friends?
We're all friends.
That's right. We're all neighbors. We're all friends.
We all pay taxes. All right, town moderator. All right, never mind campaigning. Come over here.
Musical chairs here.
Good evening, gentlemen.
What words of wisdom do you bring us?
Sky's blue. Got the plan is floss twice and brush daily.
And I always wanted a dome over the town so we'd always have nice weather.
Yeah, I've said that.
You know, we'd open it when it's sunny and close it when it rains.
Okay. Just move the whole town into the cowboy stadium.
Like Brigadoon.
So good evening. I do have the notes you guys sent me. And I kind of, what I did was I went back and researched the notes that would be really more applicable to the moderator. First and foremost, thank you because clearly this list that you put together is very thoughtful. And some of these, some of these things make a lot of sense. I went, some of the things like the consent question, and really what I focused on was the things that would speed up town meeting. And some of the items that were in your, in your notes, I've been seeing them on the, if you're not aware, the moderators actually have what they call the gavel line. And it works fantastic. So any member of the mass moderator association can write in a question and other moderators from other communities will respond. So I've been following up even before you folks sent over this letter, the issues of consent, reading the warrant questions. But in order to clarify, after I've read, got your letter, I sent a note into the mass moderator. And the first thing I asked, I said, could you help me with the, you know, give me, give me your thoughts, give me your suggestions on how your communities handle consent? And then also that I followed that is a separate question with regard to reading the warrant articles. The first thing I can tell you, I can, we can talk about the process for handling consent and how it works and, and how the reading of the warrants. But the biggest thing, and I, I would strongly suggest we entertain these and that we do that. But the one thing that will unequivocally have to change is the timing to which we get information out to the voters. And I think, Brian, I think you had alluded to some of this when you and I and Rose met to put together the questions for the current annual town meeting, or at least review them, that in your prior, prior life, you, the timing of this was a lot sooner. So now to get to the point, what came back, Munson uses consent. A lot of communities use consent, but the one thing I found is these communities have, for lack of a better term, at least to acquaint it to something, our green sheets, they have those out at least in a minimum of two weeks prior to town meeting. Because they, in, in essence, it's not only a transparency issue, it's an understanding issue that, and just to kind of set it up for you briefly, if you haven't been through what consent is, consent would be simply where you would take probably the most rote questions like the annual acceptance of the highway money, some of the, some of the end questions that fall under advisory. And you would ask the town meeting to agree to vote those as a block. And you might say, okay, we want to ask for consent on questions 1, 2, 8, 12, 16, 23, 30, 32. And the way they do it, and it seems to be very consistent, is the moderator would read each of the questions that would fall under the consent vote. And any voter who did not want it to happen would simply say, hold. That question would then be removed from the list. And then the remaining questions would be voted on as a block. Now, we could realistically eliminate, pick a number, five, six, seven, eight questions. And I'm not saying eliminate. There would, there would be consideration to them. Sorry, John Doe.
Well, I go back to your point there about the information coming out. And in your experience, it seems like the thing that's always delayed is the budget part. Is it appropriate then to say, look, you're right, let's get the warrant out to people? The budget always seems to take a little longer to actually get that part in the green sheet that's out.
Right.
Could we do two separate mailings, if you will?
Absolutely.
So again.
What, what one of the communities said to your point, one of the communities, and I think it was, it might have been Stowe, but what, one of the communities, the way that particular moderator alluded to it, he said they have the warrant part out at least two weeks ahead. Now, clearly advisory has to have their hearing, which is a week before the town meeting, and analyze the questions in preparation for the recommendations. But the warrant itself, whether you vote to close it sooner and then begin the process, because once the warrant is closed and posted, well, then it's, it's should be out into the public domain as quick as possible. Because the second part of that is going to be the way to waive the reading of the individual thing. So every year, we all know, where the moderator stands up there and reads the entire warrant question, then Craig comes to the microphone and the motion is identical. So you're just parroting it back and it takes double the time. Oddly enough, and I hadn't really, and it's probably been done prior to the judge, because I mean, I go back to Dalton Philpott, to my first meetings. But the judge actually had not the exact wording, but the way he worded the question of how once the warrant is posted, waived the reading of the warrant, by adding a few words to that simple motion. And one moderator expressed that this is the first thing he says at every meeting. Now, and then other moderators tagged onto it. He makes it his first motion that he be allowed, in cases, in this case it was a gentleman, that he be allowed to waive the reading of the warrant questions. So, and then another one came in and said, I don't even do it as a motion. I just tell them I'm doing it. And no one ever argues. So the point is, what the moderator would say is they would read Article 27, whatever the, it has a tagline, and then a two-line summary of what the question is. Then the motion is made, then the, then we get the recommendation from advisory, then we get the discussion on the floor and it solves the problem. I think unequivocally, you could cut a pretty big chunk of time out of the meeting. And we need to do that. I'm not, you know, I'm, of anyone, you know, go back to Craig's.
Basically a motion, Article 14, they want to buy a town dump truck.
Yeah.
Craig, I move.
Bingo.
Yeah.
And you're done. So my point is to Craig's point a little while ago during the, the conversation with regard to the senior center, nobody understands tradition of all of us as much as I do. I mean, my grandmother was a selectman. I was a selectman. You know, we all did this. And tradition became a big thing. And certain things that you didn't do was you didn't tackle some of these questions at special town meeting. And I'm not advocating for any one question over another. That's not my job. But my point to the matter is, we really don't have a special town meeting in the fall anymore. I think we should stop calling it that. We should call it the, the fall town meeting. We all fully understand that the great and general court does not have a budget done on time. Cliff doesn't have all his information in order to do this. So we go to the fall town meeting, you folks pick the questions. But some of this can definitely be in play and we could do it. I mean, clearly you're not going to use consent items at, at fall town meeting because it looks way different. You don't have the highway. You don't have the thousand for conservation. You don't have any of that. But you could clearly waive the reading of the entire warrant only to have it followed by a motion that replicates the effort. So those things can be done. But the biggest thing we have to do is we're going to have to work closely together between yourself, the advisory, myself and whoever else to make sure we get everything out well. make sure we get everything out well ahead. Because you really couldn't use consent if they got the information on Friday afternoon because they'd have no idea what you, the voters have no idea what we're talking about. And I think it'd be wrong of us to do it. But it can easily, yes, it can easily be done. The third thing that was in there was the use of, or consideration for the use of electronic voting. From my own personal thing, I absolutely support it. And I can tell you, you know, two-thirds looks a lot different from where we're standing to where the folks in the crowd are sitting. Two-thirds looks way different to me than a majority looks. And the concern is, like, the first question, we had one reversed, I think I was off by three votes. So three votes out of 200 is not, you know, it's not a lot. The question on the senior center changed dramatically from the initial vote to the second vote, as far as I'm concerned. And that, to me, was because after the initial vote was declared, when I made the decision, many people got up and left. And that's, that's historic. I mean, that always happened, like, if a big school question came up, as soon as it came up, everybody left the room. Look at, this is, this is America. You can vote for your one question and leave, but it had a huge influence on what happened there, be it right or be it wrong. My feeling is the use of a clicker system would eliminate that. And even majority votes, there are times when they're, they're really close. And I would rather have the, have the voters feel that it was a transparent issue, that it wasn't led in a direction. And clearly, electronic voting will do that. We can have the conversation all day long about folks who might feel pressured. And they always used to say, no one's going to vote against the school, the police, or the fire. Because they don't feel right doing it in an open session. Has nothing to do with the merits of the question, whether or not they should have passed, whether they're observing. It's the peer pressure thing. I think those two items would make, number one, I also, I think it would make the meeting go much faster than having to have people stand up, take the confidence, do the math. So those three things, I think, are really what I had. The only other one I had a comment on was Saturday town meetings, which I think before we even remotely considered that. Let's see how consent works, waiving of the reading and clickers and that type of thing.
And babysitting.
Babysitting is.
Childcare, I think, would be huge.
I'm not a fan. I mean, kids today, especially, let's focus on the kids. And, you know, when I was a kid, when you and I umpired baseball together back in the 70s and the early 80s, there was one sport. Yeah, baseball. Now these, now kids and parents have so many places to go that Saturdays will just blow up a weekend.
No, my point is, no, for the, if we keep it on Monday, offer childcare, then maybe some younger people will come.
I think you could certainly offer it as an option.
Right.
But, you know, now, I don't want to get us too far afield. I think the big thing is consent can be done, waiving of the reading can be done, and that can be done. But we're going to have to work together. We're going to have to be way out in front getting the information out. And then I think we ought to strongly look at the use of electronic voting, at least for the.
Don's got one.
Start small and move in.
Start small, move in. I mean, that part is up to you folks. I'm happy to, I'm happy to offer any thoughts.
It's a model.
The Moderators Association has constant conversation about electronic voting and how it works and how it doesn't work. I'll share any information you want. I'll ask the question and give you the responses.
I think Eva's got a few quotes, too.
Yeah.
She does. Brian sent something over on the quotes. So I know the quotes are out there. I know it's there. I know that, again, through the gavel line, the Moderators Association thing, it's talked about constantly. And I find more and more towns are going to it. And I think if we're talking about speeding, speeding the meeting up, you're going to speed it up through the use of consent, speeding it up through the waiving of the reading of the questions, and probably through the use of clickers, I think it'll give you a better, quicker, more transparent meeting, and it'll cause us all to get together a little more and plan the thing out a little stronger than we have historically.
So do you think, do you think at the Fall Town Meeting, we should, we should do a pilot of waiving the reading?
Yeah. I think, I mean, consent, you wouldn't, consent, you wouldn't use.
Not there, no.
Waiving of the reading of the actual articles. But again, the one thing you're going to have, that we all need to remember, if we're going to look at doing that, we're going to have to have that warrant, at least the warrant, so the voters will have an understanding. We have to have it out to them two weeks before. Because they need the, the voters need the opportunity to read it, have a sense of it. Because I think as soon, if you hand somebody something, then at the night they come in, and let's be clear about something. You know, I sat in that chair from 1987 to 99, and then again, from '06 to '12. This is the way it's always been. The vast majority of the time, the timeframe from final, final information of the voter to town meeting has always been incredibly tight. There's no doubt we could do this. We're just going to have to plan better and get the information in the voters' hands much sooner, or we're not being fair to them, and in all likelihood, it'll fail.
Well, let's set the date now, then, where it's on the agenda for special town meeting information.
I think the big thing is, once you folks vote to close the warrant, from, again, now, having sat with you and doing it from this side, it's, the quicker you, when you close it, the quicker you post it, then we get it out to the voters. Again, I think, Brian, you may have a better sense of some of this, just based on the rough conversation we had before on timing and the faster you can do it, the meeting, create as big a gap as you can, as opposed to, you know, we've always worked in town on, this is what the state says we have to do. You know, you got to have it here, advisory here, town meeting here. We need to kind of back that up.
Right. I mean, the schedule has always been getting the special town meeting, sorry, the financial town meeting, if you will, done so that the town clerk has time to send out the tax bill, basically.
Sure.
Set the tax rate for the December mailing.
December, yeah.
That's why it's late out. If you go into November, they feel they haven't got enough time to do their magic with the numbers. So, but also, you can't go too early, because as Don said, you want people to be able to participate, and people aren't back till after Labor Day. So you compress the window one way and you compress, you would compress it the other way. And that's why I think that second, the last week of October has worked out the best.
I think.
I don't think we've ever varied more than a week one way or the other.
In the other direction, it's never wavered more than a week. And on the flip side, now if you look in at the last week, so again, I think you guys are batting around the 21st, say you land on the 28th. I mean, that means that in order to make this work, from what I've read.
Right.
You, you know, 20, so 28th, I'm backing up, 25th would be that Friday, two weeks before that Friday, you want to have that, you want to have that warrant already posted and out to the voters in the mail.
And keep in mind, I think at the special, it's a two-week thing for the advisory, not a one week. So they have to, and then they fall, that's why we usually fight against the Columbus Day holiday, because that messes up the Monday, it screws up the 14 days, because, oh my God, the calendar goes to the week before.
Yeah, what I would, my suggestion, that would be that we, we really not kind of take the warrant and say, look at, you know, the, forgetting, not because you want to pay it all deference, I don't mean this to sound flippant, but forget about the advisory committee hearing. Just think about closing the warrant. As soon as you close it, post it, and then mail it. Because then all the other stuff's going to fall into its natural rhythm anyway. But this, and the other side, will get the information in the voters' hands that much sooner. Again, if you want to pick an example question, you've got the senior center potentially coming up again. If the voters have the warrant in their hand two, two and a half weeks, even three weeks sooner, they've got more time to ask questions, as opposed to on the town meeting where it becomes more of kind of a, you know, a seeing eye single versus. So I think the whole thing really gets down to when you close the warrant, post it as quick as you can, and then we get on to the next thing.
So if you're going for that two-week thing, even say, we say, October 28th, the select board, selectmen, board selectmen still only has, after Labor Day, five meetings before the two-week window before the town meeting. It compresses that time. If we took the 21st, it'd be even worse.
It'd be even worse.
Right.
I mean, your big thing is, again, I make this suggestion as a former selectman. I mean, you control the warrant. So I mean, I'm not suggesting, but think about it. Theoretically, you could open the warrant at your next meeting, say, we've taken all the information, we're closing the warrant. I wouldn't suggest you do that, because now you're, you're whacking everybody. What I'm saying is, you, you really have the, you have the control of how long that warrant stays open. If I remember right from my days, there's no pre-described time that says the warrant has to be open for four months. You could say, look, you know, and one of the things historically, and I don't want to belabor the point, because it goes back to when I was on the board, even back when I was with your father. Historically, we would always say, have all your articles in by the end of January. And you'd still be collecting the stuff at the end of February. Now on, you'd say, no.
With the town reports.
Yeah, exactly. And say, hey, you know what? We're not doing that anymore. When we tell you this is when we want it, this is when we want it, close it. If you don't get it in, we're sorry. But our, we're beholden to the voters, not to the department's failure to get their information.
Okay. So, Don, would you say we should set the 28th and then?
I think the 21st.
I don't think it gives people enough time.
I think it gives plenty of time. You can, like Rick said, we could set the schedule, and this is how it's going to be. We close it on the 21st, I mean, sorry, we, town meeting 21st, we close it on September 30th, and that's still four weeks in September, not counting Labor Day, because we have five weeks in September this year.
You just shorten up the, all you're going to do is open and close the warrant, and you just shorten up that window. But you got to force people to respond to the window that the, that the selectmen set. And sorry, Brian, I forget the term. My grandmother always said selectmen. You, you have to.
It's still right.
You have to, you have to cause the boards and those that are accountable to the town meeting to fall inside that window. You don't have to give anyone that leeway. We open it, we close it. If you got it in, great. If you didn't, we're sorry. Your, your inability to be punctual is not our problem. And now, because more importantly, we have to get this information to the voters, especially if we want to use consent and waiving of the, waiving of the readings, because the voters need a fair chance to understand what they're being asked to vote on.
Yeah.
So I'm with you, Craig. I think you ought to open it and close it and say, I'm sorry, this is the way it goes.
Yeah, I think town meeting on the 21st would be sufficient, in my opinion.
It's been the last Monday of October for the past 15 years, but hey.
Breaking tradition.
Now, if we're going to constrain the seniors and the building committee even more, we might as well go ahead and make it even worse for them, so.
That's it. That's exactly what we're doing.
Right.
It does seem like it, yes.
It's our plan. It's one week. I think things.
That part is.
I don't think I heard anybody else push for the 21st.
I heard the 21st.
We said the 21st at a previous meeting a couple times.
Yeah, and then I think the 28th is a good plan. We have other things to change here. I just went over the fact that with the meeting of the advisory on the 14th, which can't be the 14th, because it has to be the week before, because of the two-week holiday thing. So we're pretty much down to four meetings prior to the closing of the warrant, if we, less, if we make it to 21st.
Again, I just think the big.
But what do we have to put out? We know.
We don't know yet. We've asked people for, we haven't even sent out a submission. We've asked Brian to keep a shortlist.
Here we are, July 29th. We have plenty of time for people to get submissions in.
Yeah, I'm just saying, again, I don't, I'm not even remotely going to get into your knickers. I've been out of that job for a long time. On the flip side is, you open it, you close it, you can control it. And I think the tighter the leash, the more responsive everyone will become, because in the end, we're all accountable to the vote.
Sure.
Is that your motion?
I would like to make a motion to town meeting, October 21st, with closing the warrant on September 30th.
Any second? I'll second it. Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion and make it the 28th.
Is that an amendment?
Amendment, yeah, two second, whatever.
What?
Call the vote if you want.
Are you making, I'm calling the vote on the 21st. All right? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One nay?
One nay.
Thank you.
Always my pleasure. Great night.
Always nice to see you.
Yeah, always.
I want to close September 30th. September 30th. So that way it gives us, like Rich said, two weeks to get it out ahead of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Budget transfers. Mr. Transfer.
Coming. Did you have your copies?
You do.
Kind of just quickly go over what we.
So the employee benefits is up to $97,065? The last time we talked, it was like 88, right?
Yeah, there was something floating around out there that had to get moved.
Okay. Okay. Is that, okay.
So you can see where we took the $97,000 from by just going on the list.
That's the longevity from longevity and unemployment, property and liability.
I thought we zeroed out longevity, because we had nobody left to take.
There was 200 in there.
I know, but.
We zeroed out for next year.
Yeah, but I don't understand what, it was Kathy retired last year. Well, that's why we have money left over.
Right.
We didn't need it.
Right.
Been here since 6 o'clock, and I want to go home.
Okay. That should serve.
Of course, we had, I was at the advisory board meeting when they voted.
The reserve fund, yeah.
So fortunately, we had a little money left over. The town administrator paid. I hope we didn't get a pay raise in the meantime, but tax total expense, and then we cleaned up law and claims. So that was a hefty overage. We don't generally.
No, I know.
Okay. Police training and I moved to general salaries. Police cruiser maintenance, I moved that to general expense. Equipment, I moved to building, building maintenance. Office equipment acquisition to the record clerk. There was nothing out of that. And the website, we matched up utilities and maintenance because there was quite a bit of money left over in the law. So that.
That's all credit to you figuring out that Sincarfa stuff, or whatever their new name is.
Don't ask me about Sincarfa.
Could you explain that? I am surprised, well, Don.
Getting a credit.
I'm surprised we had less than, under 10,000 left in law and claims. It's just, she's.
Want to tell you something else I did, too?
No, not on record. No, no.
These are legitimate.
Okay, go ahead.
The town account has the authority to do this.
Okay.
All right.
That eight cents in the selectman's salary account?
I'm not doing anything for you guys. I'll give you 16. How's that? I'll double it.
Make it 15. It's easier.
I'd like to do something with zeros on it. That's what.
That's it.
No, seriously. I did move some money from the building inspector revolving account to our general fund. I moved $10,000 from the cemetery revolving to the general fund. Cemetery was overdrawn by $27, $2770. I had a chat with Dwayne outside about that. So I took that from their cemetery revolving, putting it against that overage. There was the overage on the elections. I took that out of my mandate reimbursements, $79133. And then general fund, Munson expenditures. Oh, that was just a accounting change.
So these, these are major ones. Remember, Don, we had a couple, what was the dog one? You know, we said, we'll put that off and handle it at the end of the year. It was such a minor thing. Those aren't on here, the little ones, like?
No, no.
Yeah, okay.
We don't have anything on dogs. It's small anyways.
Right, and I think.
Was that the same year that we had the bullets and the dogs on the same?
No, no, that was this year, because Shelley, we talked about doing something in the fall. We said, no, we're not going to. And then, what was it, Craig? Was it emergency management was over a bit, but we said, no, we'll just do a transplant and take care of it.
Yeah, it was a large amount.
But that's not on here, because those are small things.
Right. Yeah, I did a lot of small ones. And I talked to, I'm sorry, just missed his name, but to Brian about, look, there's any 250, I'm just going to start moving.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
There was some like 28, 30s. I just move those around on my own. But these are too much. These are too big to kind of, you know. It opens another issue in my mind, that we are, really, by doing this, we're going against town meeting. Town meeting did not appropriate kind of money we spent out of these accounts. My question is, why did we? My question is, why did we? I understand, and I toddled on, talk about Dick, with Dick about the health insurance and what happened there, and that's a, that's an understandable explanation. But then, why did the website end up being so overdrawn? Couldn't we have found a moment there to say, hey, stop, stop, you know? So I'm just, you know, $20,000 over on the website?
We know what happened there.
I understand. I don't even know what happened, but I know it's overdrawn. And I think we're going beyond, we're kind of taking over town meeting in some of these things. It's legitimate. This is according to the law, what we're doing. We can do this in the last two months of the year, but then again, can we either?
Gotta keep a better eye on what's going on during the year, right?
Yeah.
Yep. The advisory board needs to be a little more proactive, and I, I don't go to that. I'm not on that board, but I go to it, be more proactive.
Well, that gets into, I mean, they've needed a clerk for a while, and we can't find that. We can't fill that position.
I know, I understand. That's why it's difficult to get the green sheets out. I can go. I do the green sheets.
Nope.
Get them out. But, and I don't mind. Don't get me wrong, I don't mind. But we gotta be a little more careful, a little more attentive, as these go along. I try to send the reports out every month, a little something to make you read it, to, a little verb to make you read it. And.
Hi, Coop.
Good for you. I'd appreciate a blurb back to it, saying, oh, have you heard this one? But I'm very careful about what I send out, too.
Yeah, nowadays.
So, but this is essentially what we do at the end of every year. I think if you took the employee benefits out, we had what's left, you know, you know, it's not that big a deal. It'd be about $23,300.
Don, do you need a motion to approve this list?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the list a bit better to town accountant?
Yeah, I got one here for you to sign.
All in favor?
Aye. Do you have the official one?
This will go on the records. You should keep one for yourselves.
You still got minutes tonight, or pushing?
Lauren, file that with your.
You still got minutes.
Yeah, we got, we got a few little things.
I want something to show the auditors.
Chairman. Mr. Chairman. Thanks.
Thank you, Derek.
You bet. Good job, Cliff.
Excellent.
Okay.
Anything else you need, let me, you know where I am.
All right. Thornton Burgess, we got, what do we got with, Ty and Bond?
They, they had their onsite, site visits, so they're working on the write-up for the conditions assessment.
I think, have we, have we decided jointly that we want to take the building back? We've decided that, right?
Yes.
I think we have a great need for it. Yeah, we have a great need for it.
Okay. And we want to get this done as soon as possible. So we should ask, I think we should ask our school committee representatives to, ask the school committee to have a motion to intern, to agreement with us on the lease.
Well, I thought we were going to, like I say, keep this on their agenda. We were gonna reach out and ask to be on the agenda in, are they meeting in August? I think they are.
Yeah, I think they are. I'll, I'll call.
Let's put it on the agenda for the, on the.
And then, if not, because then on January 1st, I think we should say they're in default if they're not in there.
If no agreement has been reached by January 1st.
Yeah.
I, I have a question. Would it be possible for a couple of the senior center building committee members to be able to get into Thornton Burgess and just look to see how it could be?
Yeah, Brian, you could arrange that, right?
Yeah, we just have to coordinate with the school.
We'll, we'll get an email out to you, Ben. Thank you.
Fire department generator.
I think we should table that.
What?
I think we should table that.
Deny the, deny the bid?
Or, so the bid was $48,000 to install the generator and some change.
The generator costs $32,000. We spent $6,200 for an engineer to draw a plant, and now they want $48,000 to install it. So I'd say we send it back or sell it.
Can our highway department install it? Make a pad?
So that's, if, if we were to reject that bid, and we were to rebid, those, that's pretty much the only thing that I could see that we could change, that we could do in-house. Now, we're trading the labor costs, right, which we're already paying for, we're just changing the project that.
We gotta pay for submit.
Highway department employee that, that's keep being paid anyways.
I, I guess my question is, why does it cost $47,000 just to run electric lines to a generator?
That's a great question. I put a nice, double the size one in my office. It was nothing like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we.
But I agree that, yes, we should look at in-house labor for at least some of it. You know, like my dad always said, municipalities don't have to turn a profit. If we pour a pad, we're not doing it with a markup.
Right.
I'd, I'd like to see a breakdown of what the $48,000 was worth.
Yep.
I just can't believe it's.
I can ask. So, so 30 days, so, so the reason I suggest the board not vote on it tonight is, so these, these were 29th, I think, 23rd, so it's held open for 30 days, so we can.
Okay, we can do it at the next meeting, right?
Yeah, we can hopefully have some information. I need some more feedback from the fire department, too, on it.
Okay, move to the.
I never watch it.
There's that agreement. If you want to hire attorney, August, I talked to him a little bit about the access stuff, and he says it's not something the town's required to do. So if you just wanted to pursue a cable license, it didn't have that in it, he would be fine with that, and he could represent us. And it's an hourly, it's an hourly agreement.
The other guy, Harrison, he fell, right?
Correct.
Let's go over a cookie.
There you go. All right.
Was this just boilerplate now, then, pretty much?
Yeah. Then you, it would just be voted authorized.
I would make a motion to authorize town administrator to agreement with Epstein in August for the renewal of the cable license agreement.
We're gonna cap the number there. We did something like that with the other guy, didn't we, where we not to exceed? I mean, we're taking out law and claims, but we don't want to make an open checkbook either.
I, I think if we authorize Brian, he'll be able to work within that.
Come back with a budget, you know, please. I, I second that, but I mean, let him come back and say, yeah, this shouldn't cost you more than $3,000 or something like that, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have, where else, where are we here? We have the vote the North Road School Zone.
I guess I should recuse myself.
Certain people that are on North Road have been speeding past the schools.
I mean, but the signs on my property, thanks so much for putting it up already.
Put it up personally.
Did you? That wasn't you out there. I never saw you with a shovel in your hand.
Mine car doesn't go over 50.
Which one?
The old one.
Yeah, or downhill, though.
It's rolling.
Yeah.
Like Fred Flintstone.
You need a motion on this, Brian?
Yeah. To establish the school zone as.
I'll make, I'll make, I'll make the motion to.
I'm serious, I think, my frontage. I may, I should recuse myself. I'm in favor.
You're outside the school zone.
I'm outside the school.
Yeah, go ahead.
You made the motion, Craig, right?
I'll make the motion to approve the North Road School Zone for Green Meadows as presented.
I'll second it. I won't vote it.
Any further discussion?
Nah. 70 years, nobody knew was there. Okay, thank you.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Recuse.
What do we do? Two or drizzle?
Can he second, even though he recuses himself?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, just to get the vote.
All right.
All right, and we have a, something here. We have an appointment, we have an appointment, the, appoint the town clerk, the records access officer.
Reappointed, basically.
Reappointed.
Make a motion to reappoint Eva Weisman as the RAO.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen report.
One quick thing came up. Eva did mention to me, there's, in the general bylaws, it talks about the right to farm.
Yes.
It's supposed to be posted every year at the annual town meeting on the five parts.
Really?
Yeah.
Post it where?
So, you know, we have the places we post the, the town warrant.
Yeah.
We have to post the right to farm bylaw every year at the same time, which fell through the crack. So she's like, really? It's on the website. Do we have to post it every year? So it's something she likes to put on, obviously not the special town meeting. She'd like to think about taking that part out, you know.
Which brings me to the constable, to one of the constables said, why do we have to be elected? Why can't you just appoint us?
We stopped appointing fence viewers and the Rover, right?
So you, why can't, they're elected now. Why can't you just do, change it till we're appointed?
We have a field viewer, but when Mr. Field died, we lost him.
Just a thought.
Yeah. Yeah, let's see. Obviously, you know about the planning board, a short meeting, and it came out pretty well. Don, you were there for the hearing on the Glendale Road.
Yeah, they withdrew the term without prejudice.
Yeah.
Your report?
Just the fiber optic committee met last week. I didn't attend it, so I don't have much info yet of what they had, for the discussions.
The master plan committee, we have 251 responses to the survey online, and eight from the hard copy, so 259. The survey's gonna close on July 31st, so you still have an opportunity. If you haven't, either pick one up at the library or go online and fill it out.
Who's collecting this? The online surveys? Is that through the?
The vendor. The vendors, the consultants.
EDM or whatnot, BH, BVM, something like that.
Town administrator report?
Two quick updates related to the water district. Mass D, Mass DEP approved the water system permit for modifications. I think, John, you received that today. And we also received the estimate from Ty and Bond for the botanical study that's also needed for that project. And I think that price was $8,600 for the botany study. So my question was, is that gonna come out of, should that come out of ARPA? That's where the, the water district funding's coming out of, pay Ty and Bond, and that's where the project come out of. If, if we have a funding source, and I can sign that and get it back to them, so we can keep, keep the momentum up.
Yeah.
I'd say, why not, you know, that's what we save the rest of the year, right?
That's what it's for, right?
It's for that project.
Yeah.
Minutes?
Minutes?
Minutes? July 1st, 2024. We have the senior center building committee in attendance, and the Hammond Regional School District. Fill vacancies, we fill vacancies, very possible. We talked about clerk positions. National Bureau has completed the work in EV charging.
Hmm, not so much.
Not so much.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the July 15th, 2024 minutes. Police chief, the well request, the town clerk was in to talk about, discuss early voting, and appointed the officials for the voting, the year-end transfers, we discussed that, we just voted on them tonight. Cable agreement, we just voted tonight. More, more one-day liquor permits for the senior center.
I still would like to investigate, just if we can do it, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
And 530 Glendale Road Water Testing, Public Health. Thornton Burgess lease, we discussed that again. Anything else?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Michelle posted on town bulletin board annually the right to farm bylaw. I gotta tell you?
I do that.
Yeah, exactly.
If we, if we do what other communities do, and they post it on the signs, that's the right to farm, is that true?
Yeah. No, it says on the town bulletin board, you know, where the, where the warrant is posted, it says it right in the bylaw.
You like over him, and they all.
I think, I think you're right, just a sign saying, hey, we're a right to farm, you know, community. Maybe, instead of a funny joke next week, they can change it on the bulletin board.
I'm gonna miss that funny joke. I'm gonna miss that funny joke.
Anything else to come before the board?
Motion to return.
Hearing no second, we'll continue.
He whispered it, I heard.
I was trying to laugh.
All in favor?
This is funny. Would you get that at like 0.2?